Good evening and welcome to the January 18th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is a virtual participation only. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. See anyone? Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 134208476 pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So, welcome again, everyone. Please, anyone who's not participating and until you're called on, please mute your mic and turn off your camera and let's start with a roll call. And let me get something up here. Okay, let's start with the vice chair, Shereen Davis.
Present.
Our clerk, Cory Matters.
Present.
A select board member, Dean DeCastro.
Present.
And select board member, Jeffrey Dykens.
Present.
And the chair, Peter Kokolos, is present. Let me give you just a quick overview of what we're going to do. It's pretty simple tonight. First, we have a public announcements and agenda item requests. I've already heard that I have at least a couple from the board. We'll then get into new business and first thing is coronavirus and Dr. Bob Dunkinson will give us an update. We'll then have public comments on the following agenda items. And let me have a little discussion about this after I mention them. They consider the amendments of the home room, of a home amendment to the home room charter and then the town manager's fiscal 2023 proposal. And let me say that, you know, tonight is the town manager's formal transmittal of the FY 23 proposal that we go through every year. And it's their budget summary and their recommendations. And it's obviously in accordance with our town's general bylaws and the charter. And this starts the process we go through over the next month and a half or so. By the end of February, we have to have a formal budget sent to the finance committee. So this is our first look with everyone else. Normally, it's a sort of a working session for the board with some questions and then then we'll come back later with for more discussions and 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 votes. This is typically a long session and normally I don't put in other other agenda items and our other board, our other chairs haven't either. We do have COVID, which I think is important. And also, we have an input for the chart, for an amendment to the Charter Review Committee. And the reason it's in here is because it's time sensitive. The chair of the Charter Review is going to be discussing it on January 23rd. That's the same day we meet, except they meet before us. So this is the only time we could, we could have a discussion and if the board wants to make comments or whatever, we can, we can talk about it. Given that and given this is a long meeting, please, I ask any public comments to be short. We had a few emails and I think you got your point across and that was under three minutes in each one of them. In any case, I'm going to try to look at around 6:15 or so, reassess where we are because I'd like to get into the budget too. These are both important things, I get it, but the budget is going to take us a long time. And so I just ask your, I ask your help in in doing it. So, back to public announcements and agenda item requests. I had two from the board, first is Shereen and then Cory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a comment and then I have an agenda item request. And so just for the general public, this afternoon, we received a correspondence from the town manager in relationship to a rescue at Scattery of some duck hunters. I was fortunate that everybody was okay. It was a coordinated effort through the fire department and the Harbor Masters Office. And it was the Harbor Masters Office that was really onsite and on scene to take care of of the people that were in the water. And what really concerned me was that there, or what I don't understand is what role did the, our local Coast Guard station play in this? I did hear that they were able to, or they had decided to put a helicopter up in the air, but putting a helicopter again up in the air and getting to rescue people in the dead of winter, cold water. I think the fate would have been worse if we were waiting for their response in this manner versus how how our Harbor Master Department took quick action on this and had a ready boat available at the fish pier where the, where the Coast Guard Station does not have a ready boat available, to my understanding. So I just want to say that this just sort of deepens our concern about Coast Guard and their ability to take care of our, take care of people that are having issues on the water. Secondly, the agenda item request is during our last Cape Cod and Island Select Board and Council Members Association meeting, the town of Eastham had mentioned that they had put a sign-on letter to to Governor Baker in response to the proposal from Holtek International, who is in charge of Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant's cleanup, to oppose their plan, proposed plan to discharge 1 million gallons of radioactive water from the power plant reactors vessels and spent fuel pool into Cape Cod Bay. So I'd like that as an agenda item request to see if we are, we would like to take a position to oppose and send something to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just want to do a follow-up. This is kind of a extension of a request that I made to the town manager about six weeks ago. And based on a conversation I had today with the Waterways Chairman, I need to expand it a little bit further. I requested that the Waterways Committee and the chair receive some information on the waterway user fee, the balance, the counting of it, how it's been used and, you know, just confirmation that it's gone through the proper steps. There's been some more inquiries lately to the Waterways Chair and myself. So not only would I like that information provided to the Waterways Committee, but any other Waterways Committee that is involved in the process along with the Select Board, at least for informational purposes, because frankly, I don't know where some of these inquiries are going and I want to be prepared as best as possible, especially with the budget season going on, knowing what's going on with the waterway user fee and what information we may need to be privy to, to react to certain questions or comments moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. I just want to bring it to Jill's attention and the board's attention. There's, when it rains, there's a, there's a large lake that develops on the Commerce Park Loop Road to the south side of the road. So if that's our road, and I think it is, we really got to put it on, on the list somewhere to do something about it. It is a lake and it's so bad that you, you, you can't go through it in your car. So I just wanted to bring it to folks' attention and it's really exacerbated by the recent rains. Thank you very much.
That's at the bottom of the hill.
The bottom of the hill on the south side of the loop. It's bad. It's bad.
Okay.
And it froze solid, so you could get over it.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else on the board? Okay, any public comments? Agenda item requests, rather? Okay, seeing none, let's go on with the agenda, new business, COVID update. Dr. Dunkinson, I see you here.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Recognizing you have a full agenda tonight, I will keep my update fairly brief. As of yesterday afternoon, we had 644 total cases in Chatham. And let me share my screen here and I can show you the latest monthly case count. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
So we've had 644 total cases since the beginning of the pandemic. We've had 77 cases so far in January of 2022. And that is compared to a total of 106 cases for all of January 2021. So where we thought that last year, last January, January 2021 was the worst month we might seen, unfortunately, I suspect we are going to see the, this month, this January, be the worst month we've seen for confirmed cases. The only positive in that is, as we've talked about before, most of these cases are mild because we now have vaccines available to us, we have better medical treatments available to us. And while the hospitalization rates are going up, death rates are not, and the hospitalization rates are going up simply because we have so many more people with COVID. Not that the cases are any more severe than they were last year, they're actually significantly more mild than they've been in the past, but there's just so many more people. And a lot of confirmed cases are being found in hospital settings when people are entering the hospital for other reasons, they then get tested for COVID and they find out they have it because we are seeing so much asymptomatic transmission. And we're seeing that within Chatham, we're seeing it on Barnstable County, we're seeing it in Massachusetts and frankly, across the country. And so that's the first piece of information and we'll keep this figure updated as we go through the next couple of months like we always do. The other information that I wanted to pass on is our percent positivity rate. We are, we did see a slight downturn in that rate last week. Remember, this data only comes out once a week and it's always about two weeks behind. So we did see a slight downgrade last week on the 13th. We dropped down to 80.9, sorry, we dropped down for percent positivity to 13.9. We were up around 14.6 the previous week. And last week's rate was the third lowest on Cape Cod. So that was good news because if you remember in previous reports, Chatham had been one of the highest towns in the Cape and we are now heading towards the bottom, which is good information. And then we have our average daily incident rate and there again, we saw a downturn to the point where we were the second lowest on the Cape, which again is good news because in the weeks prior, we'd been one of the highest towns in the Cape. And we dropped down from about 106 down to the 80s. So again, we're seeing a positive trend in the number of cases. And this is, this is similar to what we're seeing in Massachusetts as a whole, where Massachusetts was one of the first states to experience the Omicron surge. And now, based on the data that we're seeing, we appear to be coming out of that after about a month to six weeks, which is similar to what was seen in South Africa as well as in Great Britain, that the Omicron surge lasts about a month to six weeks. But unfortunately, you know, a significant number of people get infected. So that's a quick update on where we stand on the numbers. And then just a couple of other things I wanted to pass on so the board was aware. Starting tomorrow, you'll be able, every household in the United States will be able to order four COVID-19 test kits for free from the federal government. And I do know that one or two people were able to do that today because the site was up for beta testing. It does not officially launch until tomorrow, but some people have already indicated to me that they have in fact been able to place their orders. Keep in mind however, that it's going to take anywhere from a week to 10 days to get your order. There is no charge for the test, there is no charge for shipping. So I strongly urge everyone to take advantage of that. We did receive an update today during our Cape and Islands Health Agent Call on the bulk purchase option that we were looking at with some of our neighboring communities and then Barnstable County stepped in. We have continued to indicate to them that we are interested in bulk purchasing of test kits. They, based on the latest information today, we expect an order to be placed tomorrow and we may get those test kits as early as next week. And then we will announce how we're going to distribute those. Based on the pricing that we're looking at, we will probably be able to order about 2,000 of those test kits that we then turn around and make available to the public through inappropriate means to try to avoid a mad rush. A couple of other towns had test kits available over the weekend and early last week through individual town purchases. And there was a significant demand for them, but it was handled very well. But just keep in mind that if we do get that order next week, it'll probably be the end of next week or the beginning of the following week when we would have those available for distribution and folks would need to prove their residency in Chatham, either through their driver's license or a tax bill or utility bill. So those will be for Chatham residents only. And we will probably, based on the size of your household, probably distribute one kit for each member of your household, each kit containing two tests. And then I just wanted to announce that the Barnstable County Testing Clinic that's been run at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds will continue to be operational, but it is moving across the street to the Cape Cod Church so that they can do it indoors as opposed to having to do it outdoors now that we are clearly in a winter season. So that will continue and it will be Monday and Thursdays generally from 10 to 2, possibly 10 to 3, depending on the demand. The county did indicate that the last couple of test sites, or last couple of test openings that they've had recently, there has been a downturn in the number of people coming, where there was high demand right before and during the holiday season, that demand is dropping off and that may be a reflection of the fact that, you know, people are accessing test kits through other means, if you will. And then also, the other announcement that came out today from the state was that they will now be making test kits available to both staff and students as a way for the state, the states to get out of, schools to get out of the test and stay program, where it was putting a significant burden on the school nurses and all to do all the testing required under this test and stay program. So the state is now going to be supplying test kits to the schools, which then they can supply to students and staff that opt into the program so that they can do that testing at home as opposed to having to wait till they get to school. So those are the latest announcements today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dunkinson. I just have one quick one. I had, somebody's on the, okay, let me try again. Somebody, please, everyone go to mute. Again, I did take it to a number of people, a few of them have had their elective surgery delayed at Cape Cod Hospital. Some of it, okay, serious, but it's, you know, have you heard anything about how long it's going to take? They were told that they weren't sure, but they may be able to reschedule them in a short, quote, short period of time.
Yeah, the latest information that I've seen is, is probably things returning to some semblance of normal, maybe in three weeks. As you can imagine, with all the healthcare workers that are testing positive because of the Omicron surge and more widespread testing, a lot of hospitals are facing staff shortages. So they are, you know, the governor did announce several weeks ago that a lot of elective surgeries were going to be postponed. That has taken on new urgency just recently because of the staffing shortages. But the, the larger hospital systems are indicating, you know, potentially in three weeks or so, things will be better than they are now, but that still remains to be seen at this point.
Thank you. Anything from, anything from the board? Seeing none, how about the public? No comments, Dr. Bob. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up are public comments on our business agenda. Again, this is on, we'll start with the amendment to the Charter Review. Any public comments? No one has a hand up? One's going twice. Okay, we did receive a number of, we'll move on to the town managers, oh no, I can't get away that easily. We'll take our first thing on the agenda, which is consider the amendment to the, to the Charter Review Committee and I'll just make a, tell you, I mean, I know the board's seen this, but this is from the public. We received an email from the Charter Review Chair and it included a submission to the Charter Committee for an amendment to the town charter. I don't know, Cory, you have it in front of you, you want to read it since you're the clerk or you want me to just continue? I can do it, it's up to you.
I have it in front of me, if you want me to read a letter from John Carr.
Okay, thanks.
All right, fine. This is addressed to the Chatham Select Board, Chatham Town Manager, Chatham Airport Commission. Attached is a submission to the Charter Review, Charter Review Committee for an amendment to the town charter. As you will see, it adds review of the airport finances and plans for the normal budget process of the town. It will be, we will be discussing this proposal at our meeting via Teams on January 25th. Since we believe that this proposal will create new work for each of our, of your organizations, we are invited, you and your, or your designees to attend and give us your comments. Of course, your attendance and comments are welcome at any of our meetings, but this one in particular. Sincerely, John Carr, Chair of the Chatham Charter Review Committee.
Okay, thank you. I don't see, I don't see John on the, on the, on, online at all, unless he's on the phone. There's one telephone number I don't know. But if not, let's see, I guess I'll turn it over to, to Jill. I think Alex has a couple of comments and then we can get to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the board and the public knows, the airport revolving fund is the mechanism at town meeting that approves the amount of revenues coming in. The airport revolving fund has a management agreement, so funds from that management agreement as well as other revenues go into the revolving fund that's set at town meeting. Alex and her team provide monthly reports to the airport commission on the revolving fund, what the expenditures have been for landlord-related costs and otherwise, as well as the revenues that have been brought in. It's a fairly detailed report and I think this has worked well for our tracking and soon to be released, we have a financial transparency page on OpenGov that will make it a little more user-friendly to review. But with that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if we can have Alex share her screen and she can talk about the airport revolving fund. We don't have an operating budget for the airport or the airport commission. So that's a little different than what we present through the operating budget presentation that you'll see tonight. We have a number of revolving funds that Alex and her team manage and provide updates usually to the chairs or to the staff who manage them. We have building inspection revolving funds, recreation revolving funds. And what Alex has on her screen right now is part of our, I think it's our beta test for the Chatham Airport Revolving Fund. So Alex, do you want to pop into this?
Yeah, hello, Alex, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jill. Yes, I started with, this is on the town's website under the tab Financial Transparency and we do have reports on the airport revolving fund. And this is showing the airport revolving fund monthly to date, which shows through January, about $38,000 has been expended for the first half of the fiscal year. And we can actually go deeper into this by clicking on some of these items and you see purchase of services and operating expenses. And I think you can even click in more. So we are looking to get this even more user-friendly. It's not the easiest chart to read, but we're looking at upgrading that. So that's one of the items and again, it's financial transparency right on the town's website. So you can see here, and this is all of the finances of the town and this comes directly from our general ledger into this website on a weekly basis. So, and this is, you know, the airport revolving fund and it does not include beginning balances. So it's just the expenditures to date. So that is that one. I'm happy to answer your questions right now, if you have any questions on those.
No, I like, that's good. And we're going to have this for the whole budget.
It is in there for the whole budget, yes.
Thank you.
Alex, do you want to share the spreadsheet that Sam puts out?
I'm going to do that. That was my next report that we give the airport commission on a monthly basis and this is part of the general ledger, this is the airport revolving fund. So the first line item here is you see the balance forward of 94,000 and then the rental leased receipts, which are monies coming in. Payroll, personal services for the secretarial services for the airport revolving fund. And then down even the purchase of services, which lists every vendor and all the payments that are made from the revolving fund and which vendor they're going through. So, and this is provided on a monthly basis to the airport commission.
That, that was, at least in the last few, that's been included in the agenda packet too for the airport, is that right?
That's correct. So, and we're happy to answer any questions, anyone has on any of these expenses. But again, the process is that once the goods and or services have been received, the airport commission reviews those and authorizes those payments. The staff liaison sends those over to the accounting office. Accounting office will process those payments and then they get put on the accounts payable warrant and we pay the vendors through the normal approval process as we do every other Through the normal approval process as we do every other invoice that is paid for the town.
And then Alex, do you want to speak to the capital requests as well?
Yes, I'll stop sharing my screen right now. Yeah, and then the capital request. So the airport revolving fund, again, no impact on the taxpayer because it's funded through the revenues brought in. By the airport manager through the lease as well as some of the other revenues, the hangar leases. And then any capital requests have to be approved at town meeting if they're funded. As a matching fund. Oftentimes we have matching funds for the airport improvements for the. Say the runway or the snow removal building. In that case, we do authorize, we ask town meeting to authorize a separate standalone warrant article. Such as we did for, under Article 17 of the annual town meeting, 2016. Town meeting, which authorized funds, those matching funds, which normally the federal funds. 90%, up to 90% of some of the expenses. And then we have the state match and then we have local funds. So again. Depending on the type of project, it could be 80% or it could be greater. Some are funded 100% and there are no matching funds for the town. But as policy, we have segregated any airport capital from the capital budget as a standalone article for town meeting to vote on.
Okay, let's see, before I go to the board, just to reiterate where we are. The way the process is now, whether you like the way the charts are and two different things, right? We have a revolving fund. That, that. The cap on that revolving fund, which is what, 5% or $75,000 or whatever, that goes to town meeting.
That's correct.
And it goes, comes, it comes as a separate warrant article to the board and to the town meeting. And then any capital that's going to be done. Goes, goes again on a separate article. Which then gets matched or not, you know, at 5% at the town. The, one, a couple of the comments that were made, and they were thoughtful comments, people coming in. And it's, you can see that they, they. That they, they see the revolving fund, but they don't, they don't see it the same way they see it, see, let's say, our operating budget. But having said that. The capital projects. Are not something that the airport commission. Sets a date or makes a proposal for. My understanding, that has to come, they put together the AMPU, which had lots of public input, right, wrong and different, no matter what. And that's, that is a plan. It is not an action plan, it's not an execution plan. It is the FAA who then decides which of those things they want to do and they ask, they work with the airport commission and. And the question that some people had is, okay, at least one, and I thought it was a thoughtful comment. The, what are the, some of the future projects that the, that the airport commission is looking to do? And shouldn't that be in the budget? That's a good comment in a way, but. But my thought is, as I understand the way they, it operates. It's, they, they don't know when that's going to happen because it's got to be FAA's decision on when they want to move and then we'll get it, an idea. And then the process will go into another separate. Another separate warrant article for that particular project. That, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding that the. They have projected out the projects that are going forward, what will need a local match, what might not need a local match. And if a local match is needed that can't be covered by the revolving fund. Then we would have to have a separate capital article, warrant article, which would then go. Before the select board, before the finance committee through the process. As does every other capital article that's funded by the tax rate and or available funds.
Okay, and that, and I noticed on the, and I know, looking at the agenda, the airport agenda packages, package that they put out every, every month. The, that chart you showed on the revolving fund and all of the inputs that go to that and what they are. Also, as you go down to the last couple of pages, it shows what's funded now for, for our state funds and for federal funds or whatever. And they're segregated also. And, but those are also managed, not at the airport commission, but at the state or federal level.
We have to ensure that the work has been done and that's what our engineers will sign off on those, the work orders. And then it does go before the. Airport commission to make sure that they, again, that the work has been completed. And then processed through the normal process on the accounts payable warrant.
Okay. All right, let me go to the board. If anybody else wants to, I know we had received something from, received an input from the. Town council late this afternoon. I see Dean's hands up. Go ahead, Dean.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you mentioned that. I wanted to request that the opinion of town council be read. By either our executive secretary or the town manager at this time. And be made public by yours and the town manager's authorization, which is. Which is required under our protocols. And that a copy of it be transmitted to the Charter Review Committee. I'm going to defer my comments until after that. I do have some substantive comments on the, on the matter before us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be appropriate to read that at the present time, if that's your wish.
Yeah, Jill. I see, you're looking forward to.
Shauna, do you have it ready? If not, I'll get it. You're muted.
I do, I do have it. Okay, let's see. It appears the airport has historically funded its operations through the town meeting authorized revolving fund and standalone capital appropriation articles. In addition to other state, federal funding grants to the town. As a practical matter, if this is how the town intends to fund prospective airport operations and capital needs. There would appear to be little benefit in integrating the airport, airport commission into the annual general government budget preparation process provided in the charter slash bylaws. This revision to the charter would require that the airport's annual fiscal planning. Slash funding procedure comply with. The Section 6 Annual Departmental Regional School District Budget Approval Process. Including a formal finance committee recommendation on an airport. Budget and budget in quotes. And a vote by the select board to approve, disapprove, or modify said budget as those bodies would vote on other town departmental or agency budgets. The underlying intent of the proposed amendment appears to be to shift airport operational capital funding authority. From the airport commission to the finance committee and the select board. To the extent that implementation of this charter revision is deemed to transfer the fiscal control element of. Quote custody, care and management, unquote, of the, of the Chatham Airport. From the airport commission to the select board. It would be inconsistent with the enabling provisions of general law, Chapter 90, Section 51E. Which legally vests the care, custody and management of municipal airports and airport commissions. I believe that within this broad statutory delegation of authority over municipal airports. The legislature likely intended that airport commissions exercise fiscal control over their airport operations. Subject to necessary legislative body. Parent, parentheses, town meeting. Appropriations and approvals. While there is no language in general law, Chapter 90 specifically referencing airport commission budget making authority. To the extent that this proposed amendment would mandate that the airport operational and capital funding be subject to the, to the Section 6 budget review. Process of the charter. With the select board wielding the ultimate authority pursuant to Section 6-4. To review the airport operating and capital budget improvements program. Make changes as deemed appropriate and place their approved budget on the annual town meeting warrant. I believe a compelling argument could be made that this amendment would be inconsistent with the statutory scheme of general law, Chapter 90. Sections 51E through 51M and thus constitute an improper delegation of statutory fiscal authority over airport operations.
Thank you, Shauna. I'll take it back to Dean.
I'm going to wait, Mr. Chair. I want to hear what some of the other board members have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Jeff, I think is up. Okay, Jeff and then Cory.
Town council has considerable sway here in my mind and it's fairly clear, given that. Given his comments that to take on or accept the recommendation or recommend of the charter review committee that we, we would do this or would like to do this would be. Would not be met with. You know, approval by any court. We'd be outside the general laws of the Commonwealth of the United States, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I should say, which so. I'm not, I'm not interested in pursuing any further. Thanks.
Thank you. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, my, my basic read on this is, I mean, it's too bad that this had got, you know, snuck in. To our agenda tonight because, you know, the timing issues, there are only shot at kind of weighing in on it before the charter review committee meets on it. I do think there are some flaws with this particular draft amendment. As, based on the input we've received from town council. But I'm so inclined not to weigh in on this pro or con at the moment. Because I do think some of the sentiment behind it. May have some merit and I think would be more appropriate for the charter review committee to, you know, vet this, discuss it. Kind of see if there's any changes that may or may not be, you know, brought forward. In its language. And let them decide what is best for this proposal. But I'm not. I'm not ready to support it, but I'm also not quick to dismiss it at this point because it's really haven't had much dialogue on it. And. Like I say, some of the sentiment does have some merit, but as presented. I think it's flawed, but that's, that's my initial thought. But limited discussion we've had on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Shereen?
And so I agree with Jeff that the town council has weighed in on this and, and. Has, has given us our opinion that I think holds the, holds the weight of, of the discussion. And I honestly believe that the charter review committee should be discussing this within themselves. And, you know, if they're bringing a proposal, a final proposal together. You know, that's, that's entirely into their, their purview to do. Their decision to do rather. But I did, you know, as a matter of just, I started to look around to see what other towns in Massachusetts did as oversight. In this manner, and I couldn't find any other town that looks at, at. At the airports any differently, if they're in their municipality as we do and how we structure it. So. I don't really have any flavor for this either at this point.
Thank you, Shereen. Okay, back to you, Dean. Unless you want to hear from me, I have the same sort of comment and. I'll give you at least my point. We are already, there's already a process that, that. That's in place. Now, if they'd like to change that process or make it look a little differently or whatever, I mean, I'm open to have that. Dialogue with, if they want to send that to me or to the board or to the airport commission in some ways, but. I, I, I think. I, I, I'm on the side of, you know, the town council has made his, made his point. And that was not, not inconsistent with things that we've seen, said before. We seem to forget that, that as much as we are the sponsor in the town and quote the owner. It is the FAA that makes the decisions. And if we're going to want to change things, we have to, we have to understand that. And we have to deal with it and we have to be able to make our case to them, not try to change the law. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo a lot of what has been said. And I'm guided by the opinion of town council. And certainly don't favor this. And I think the board should submit a, a communication to the charter review committee. Indicating such and with a copy of the opinion. I, I am a little puzzled though. I was watching a portion of a recent meeting of the charter review committee a few weeks ago. And as I recall. A proposal was offered for. A charter amendment regarding the airport. I think it was subsequent to the committee's apparent rejection of the proposal to have the Board of Selectmen. The select board be the airport commission. And the chair. If I understood correctly, declined to take that up because the deadline had passed for proposals. So this comes in this week. It was proposed, I gather, by a member of the committee, and maybe there's an exception. For late filed proposals by committee members. And I don't know. What is really motivating the charter review committees. Somewhat fixated. Address to the airport. The charter review committee is not an ombudsman to resolve policy differences among the citizens of the town. Their job is to. Address the structure of town government in our charter and. I think if they're going to come forward with proposals, they're going to have to articulate exactly what the problem is that they're trying to address. This email from the chair doesn't really identify anything. And we've heard dribs and drabs. Of comment from members of the public. And if you watch any of the charter review meetings, I haven't watched them all by any stretch. You get a sense that there is some frustration or unhappiness over airport policy or select board. Policy with respect to the airport. We pointed out in our communication a month or so ago, or two months ago, that. We have something in this town called. Appointment authority on the part of the select board to the airport commission. We also have town elections. And those are the venues where people can address legitimate policy differences. But to. You know, continually. Work on the charter. To try to. Resolve. Some unhappiness on the part of some people with airport operations. I just. I'm just puzzled by it. I mean, the, the committee is autonomous, they're independent. I totally respect that. I think that they should, you know, get on with their work. Come forward if they want to propose a charter amendment regarding the airport. Let them come forward with it. I hope their next communication to us is their final report. Or next to final, or our comment with all their recommendations as prior charter review committees have, have done in the past. But. I felt the, I felt it important to say that. On the merits of this, let me point out also that we have a town bylaw that authorizes the finance committee. To investigate any account or, let me quote it. Investigate the books, accounts and management of any department of the town. And the books and accounts of the town shall be open to the, to the finance committee's inspection. That's in bylaws 10-4. So in addition to the. The legislative process that Alex has outlined with respect to. The revolving fund and freestanding articles. For airport expenditures, we have this in place as well. So. I, I, I think we should send a communication. Indicating our opposition to this and I think we should rely on the, cite our reliance on the opinion of town council with that. If not, at a minimum, we should simply send the, if there's a reluctance to take a position formally, we should at least send the opinion of town councils to, to Chairman Carr. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the board? See Dean, Shereen's hands back up, then Cory, then Jeff.
Dean, I appreciate that and what you've said tonight, spelling out. The extra oversight that we have with the finance committee and whatnot and, and what the charter review committee's role is. So I, are you looking for a motion or do you want to continue some discussion? I, you know, I'm happy to make a motion that we. Send, you know, I moved to send a letter of opposition on this position to the charter review committee. And attach the, the citing and opinion from town council.
Second. Okay, we have a second on that. I would just to comment, as part of that letter, we include the, the. The reference to the finance committee. It wouldn't change the, the motion. Cory's hand was up also.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would vote against that motion because my position is I don't think we should take any action on it. Let the charter review committee. Way in, vet this and recommend it up or down or however they so choose. I definitely would support sending our town council's opinion to them for their review and consideration. In those actions, but taking a. But taking a position, um, for any of the Charter Review amendments personally, I don't think it's necessary at our, at this time. You know, so I'm not like I'm feeling anti against it. Um, I just let them do their job and write them whatever, but can, you know, material we can to them, uh, but I'm not going to weigh in up or down on this. But I would support the, if we could, if we could break those into two motions, I would definitely support the legal, council's opinion sent to them, fully supportive of that, but weighing in on it up or down, I don't think is necessary.
Hi, any other discussion on that? I'm, I'm okay with just voting, but, uh, Shereen, your hand's still up, or no?
Um, no, I, if Corey wants to make a, uh, separate the motions and if that would, um, that's fine with me. If, if Jeff's okay with that.
Let, let Dean say and talk and then we'll decide. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, I, you know, my view is that the Charter Review Committee ought to complete its work, make its recommendations and come forward and expect to be questioned about those recommendations in terms of what problems are they intending to solve? I don't know what problem this is intended to solve. I really don't. And that being the case, I could live with, with Corey's suggestion. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to vote knowing something that I don't think is a good idea and I don't think this is, this is a good idea. But, um, I don't think we need to, um, and, um, but I do think we should send them at a minimum, the, um, the opinion of town council. But, you know, if, if the motion is, stays on the table, I'll vote for it. Or if you want to split it, I'll, I'll vote to, uh, on, on either, either case.
Either way, a point, I mean, the point's made, um, you know, whether we have it two motions or not, and Corey's explained what he said and I get, I understand what he's saying. I respect that. I'd just try to go with the motion, just go with the motion is, is unless, you know, two others want to do that. I'll be happy to move ahead with the way the motion is. Okay, uh, that, we have the motion, we have a second, we have discussion, let's take a vote. Uh, Dean?
Aye.
Corey? Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Uh, let's go on to the, to our FY twenty-three question. John, go ahead. I'm sorry.
My, my computer didn't capture. Is that a four to one vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is, um, I would assume that, uh, the town and the executive secretary will prepare like a communication to be sent, perhaps over your signature. I don't think we need to see it. And I think it needs to be very simple.
Yeah. Okay. And, and, and also the minutes, you know, she always, she always captures, will capture what Corey said, so he's understood.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on, uh, to, uh, the FY twenty-three supplemental. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll let Alex get her set up.
Okay.
I could use some introductory comments too.
I have to get my budget book out.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Uh, so be, before Alex moves to, uh, the presentation, I just wanted to make a couple of, um, introductory comments. So, um, the budget book that you as the select board and the finance committee have is also available online under Budget Central. And it's, it takes a lot of people, uh, to put the budget together. But a lot of town employees from all different departments are working on various areas of the budget. So when our budget directive goes out shortly after your budget summit, uh, the department heads work with their staff and they're doing a lot of other updates, sort of like an annual report, so we can have a full, comprehensive budget message. So I really want to thank, uh, all the departments and all the staff for that and as well as Alex, having to work all weekend to try to work through the, the strategic allocations that we're putting forward in our budget message. And so thank you, Alex, and thank you for the board, um, and the finance committee, because you, you spend about not just two months on this, but it's usually six months or so as we work to refine our budget message. So, um, I just wanted to note just some comments about COVID nineteen. Our COVID nineteen financial plan began in FY twenty twenty, and that's the budget that ended in June, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So a quick pivot in March. And it's important that I remind folks of this because we termed that budget, budgeting in the unknown. We really didn't know what to expect. So we hunkered down, we, we cut our budget substantially, reduced our, our revenue projections so that we could have a balanced budget and not have a substantial impact to the tax rate. Then in FY twenty-one, that was the second year of our COVID nineteen financial plan. And we called that the COVID core services budget. And now that we're in our third year of the plan, um, I've put forward the FY twenty-three budgeting for a resilient and sustainable future. And this was a budget directive in consultation with the select board for a sustainable and resilient budget. And through all of this, we've not lost sight of the community vision of Chatham being a thriving, vibrant, year-round community. And we're continuing our efforts to ensure that what lies before us is a pathway to sustainability and investment in our community. And I, I do want to note that the financial planning for both FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two budgets have worked really well to build our financial reserves and our social resources. And you'll see the budget, uh, funding requests and appropriations that I'm, that I'm putting forward do address that continued investment in our social infrastructure and, um, resources. And as we enter our six-month milestone of the FY twenty-two budget, we are filling the natural ramp up of all of the items and initiatives previously paused and the need to revisit the workload capacity and service capacity challenges that we had talked about, uh, prior to the ramp down of our budget in our, in our town finances. So the theme of preserving our, and building our social infrastructure and resiliency remains for FY twenty-three in addition to our investment in our capital infrastructure and water quality and coastal resiliency. And we continue to trim expenses wherever possible and also streamline processes to make municipal operations more efficient. So we worked off of the community priorities set by the select board, not just for this year, for your goals and objectives, but for the value statements that we established almost ten years ago and refined slightly since then. So we're looking forward to putting forward a budget that supports our community for community, for continued recovery and sustainability and by adding or redirecting resources. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jill. Uh, yes, we always start with the town's fiscal position where we are today. And as Jill mentioned, um, we were lucky enough to have, um, had the, well, not lucky enough to have the, the pandemic, but lucky enough that when it happened, we were able to pivot rather quickly, um, to reduce our budget. So we do have those reserves. So again, um, we're continuing on with the COVID nineteen financial plan because again, we're still coming out of, um, the COVID pandemic and not knowing, although we are now looking for the future. Our property values remain very high, which means the tax rate remains low for Chatham. Again, a second, uh, bond rating under the pandemic. Our triple A bond rating was affirmed by Standard and Poor's in April, twenty twenty-one. Um, so that was very good. As Jill mentioned, our reserves are stable and actually we increased our reserves, um, due to cutting back on expenditures and our low forecasts for our revenues, but we are ramping those up in the future. Capital projects, we've looked at the ones that have been completed and are scheduled, and as Tim energy's mentioned, we have, um, those are ramping up as well with, um, COVID lessening. Um, our OPEB funding strategy has worked well for us, so that also is a good reserve to have and the financial rating agencies look very positive on that. Again, we updated the budget, um, financial policies back in November, twenty nineteen. We always, um, look at those as part of the annual budget summit in October. And speaking of the budget summits, those are held in the fall of every year and provide for multi-year forecasts, um, going into the budget season and then culminating with the, um, town manager's budget as presented to you, um, tonight. So at the October twenty-six budget summit, which was year ten, again, it's collaboration. Uh, we look for a budget directive, which this time was budgeting for a resilient and sustainable future. And we go over the process and the calendar. We look at our revenue and expense trends, um, a long-range forecast. And again, as I just mentioned, um, if the budget and financial policies need any updating, again, an annual review of those every year. So as Jill had mentioned also, um, FY twenty twenty-one was budgeting in the unknown. FY twenty twenty-two was a COVID core services budget. And FY twenty twenty-three was, is budgeting for a resilient and sustainable future. So again, in twenty twenty-one, we had a level services growth budget first presented to the board. And then over the next three months from when we first presented that in January, um, to town meeting, um, we reduced the budget and presented it to town meeting for FY twenty twenty-one. The FY twenty twenty-two budget was based on the core services budget as the uncertainty remained, and now we're moving towards, um, what we had presented back in FY twenty twenty-one. Originally a level services, but growth budget, um, in order to maintain our level services for, um, the, the current services for the taxpayers. So the FY twenty twenty-three budget, um, the budget book has, includes budget narratives, the budget statements. Again, this year we have organizational charts, um, staffing history within each, um, department description. And then section ten is the FY twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan and requests and inventory. And that shows all the capital requests out through FY twenty twenty-seven. As the town managers mentioned, um, Budget Central is available on the town website and in Canadians, the budget book. Any budget updates that we have moving forward, uh, multi-year financial forecasts and the policies, the fleet listing, which are all the vehicles and equipment that the town has, and our debt schedules. The town's budgetary components, again, we have to have a balanced budget, so our revenues, um, have to support the expenses. So we also look at the revenues first. Um, our largest source of revenue is the tax levy. Then we have our local estimated receipts, items such as motor vehicle excise, the hotel motel tax, et cetera. And then other available funds, which, um, primarily are free cash for the capital and standalone articles as well as, um, other funds such as the receipts reserved for appropriation funds like the waterways improvement fund, the cemetery funds, et cetera. And we'll go into those in more detail later. Expenditures, we, um, have the general operating budget, our educational assessments, the water operating budget, which is always separate from the general fund and our five-year capital plan. And then we have our other capital and community priority items. So those are the separate articles for consideration as well as the capital plan, um, and capital priorities and the five-year capital plan. So the current year budget, the FY twenty, twenty-two budget is a core services budget based on priority funding. So this was the continuation of the core services budget, um, in our COVID nineteen financial plan that was approved at the FY twenty twenty-one budget. So this worked and worked well because it was able to preserve our revenues. We were able to strategically allocate and trim expenditures where possible, able to focus on the initiatives and preserve and build so, social infrastructure. And that sort of built us into the FY twenty twenty-three budget before you tonight. Just some numbers on the twenty twenty-two core services budget. Um, it was presented at just over thirty-three million dollars. That was an increase over the town manager's budget as presented in January, twenty twenty-one. As there were some additional, um, he, two additional FTEs for the firefighters, EMTs. And some of the budget drivers for FY twenty twenty-two, um, were increased as well. Uh, the FY twenty twenty-two capital plan was presented at two point eight million dollars. And those were approved by town meeting in June. So moving to the FY twenty twenty-three, we're looking at a balanced budget with our revenues and our expenditures. Um, you'll note here, probably items most important to note, property tax, we're looking at an increase of only one point two seven percent. We are increasing our local estimated receipts by twenty-one percent. State aid is basically level. Other available funds, an increase of twenty-two point five percent. And the water fund, um, funded through water revenues is also increasing, and that's by thirty-two percent. So while the expenditure side shows a large increase in the municipal departments, the general fund operating of six point five seven percent. Again, important to note that we are using, um, available funds, not the tax levy to fund many of these increases in services. Uh, the school department budgets, um, at this time, those are draft budgets only, uh, looking at, um, almost one point four percent increase. Water department, again, a thirty-two point two five percent increase funded by water rates. Uh, the capital budget at this juncture is looking as a decrease as we've segregated out some of the larger capital requests as standalone articles. So that is, um, presented at two point three million, a decrease of eighteen percent over FY twenty twenty-two. Our assessments are basically, um, flat to the current year. And then other articles and placeholders, and this might change as we go through the budget process. An increase of one, almost one point five million, um, over the previous year when presented. And some of those other articles, again, the placeholders for, um, community preservation articles, et cetera. And the other available funds include, um, free cash, overlay surplus, et cetera, and we'll go into detail with that. So looking at our revenues, I know I've mentioned this briefly, um, the tax levy is looking at, to fund sixty-six percent of the budget for FY twenty twenty-three. Normally at this time, we're around sixty-nine percent in our early projections, but, um, we're comfortable as we have a good source of available funds and local receipts have increased over the prior years to fund the budget. Local receipts will be funding about thirteen percent, other available funds fourteen percent, and then the water revenue at six percent. So revenues are projections. Um, we have the allowable growth to the tax rate, which is on proposition two and a half plus new growth. So that's estimated to be one point two million dollars. Our local receipts, we're increasing our estimate at this time to eighty-five percent of prior actual, which is where we were prior to the pandemic. When the pandemic hit, uh, in FY twenty twenty-one, we reduced those local estimates to fifty-seven percent of prior year. We increased that last year to seventy-three percent. And again, we're increasing it for FY twenty twenty-three to eighty-five percent. And we'll continue to monitor those trends, um, to see if that needs any adjustment, um, prior to setting the tax rate. Just our local estimated receipts where we've been, not what we have received, but where we've estimated previously. So in FY nineteen, you can see we're at six point five million. Uh, when we had the, um, budget pivot in FY twenty twenty-one, we reduced those estimates to just over five million. And now for FY twenty twenty-three, we are estimating seven point six million dollars in local estimated receipts. And that is a direct offset to the amount that we raised through the tax levy. So other available funds, again, these are offsets to the tax rate. Um, free cash was certified at eight point six million. But we right now, we're programmed in about four point nine million to use to fund the capital budget. Other one-time articles, which we'll, um, go over at the end of the presentation, um, and other capital articles. Other funds that can be used, the PEG access funds, those are the cable funds that come in. We use those to fund the channel eighteen capital and operating budgets. The waterways improvement fund, we're programming in two hundred and fifty thousand to fund some of the harbor master capital and operating budgets. And then, um, an increase this year in the sale of lots and Graves Trust Fund, um, thirty-five thousand dollars to fund cemetery capital and operating, which will go to, um, fund some of those initiatives that we're looking for. Additional, um, offsets or available funds, the revolving funds, we have the recreation revolving fund and shellfish revolving fund that, uh, directly pay for costs, so they're not included in the budget. We have receipts reserved for appropriations such as the railroad museum fund, a small budget, but it directly funds the railroad museum budget. And the waterways improvement fund, again, harbor master expenses. Um, other items for capital, chapter ninety highway state aid fund, we get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year in chapter ninety funds, which can be used for, um, road projects, um, upon submission to mass DOT for approval. Uh, the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund for sewer-related issues. Again, um, we will be getting more information on that as those, um, funds come in to help pay for pre-approved debt. And then we have the American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, uh, which can be fun to use to fund. which can be fun to use to fund a number of items, specifically water, sewer, broadband, as well as some other categories, and more to come on that as they've just been releasing the information on the ARPA funds and use of those. So the current year tax rate, the overall value of Chatham increased by 10.1%. So at $8.2 billion over the FY 2021 of 7.4 billion. The tax rate decreased by 78.8% from $4.98 to $4.62. And we increased the excess levy capacity. So again, we could have raised more through the tax levy, but we did not. So the tax, the excess levy capacity in FY 2022, the current year is $2.6 million. And last year it was $2.1 million. So the total levy increased for FY 2022 by 2.3%. And we always program in and we'll let you know what the excess tax levy is estimated to be. Because again, that is an available source of funds should the town need it prior to town meeting. So the FY 2023 revenue moving forward, we have the estimated levy limit. That's the amount that we can tax up to of $41.5 million. And as mentioned, that is the allowable 2.5% increase and new growth estimated at 375,000. Our estimated local receipts, as mentioned, 7.6 million, approximately 85% of the prior year to the 2021 actual. And then our estimated other available funds. The hotel motel tax, we always look at this because again, this is with the expansion of the room occupancy tax to the short-term rentals. That has brought in quite a bit of money for the town of Chatham. So for FY 2021, we had 894, well, total of 1.5 million in the traditional lodging and 1.6 million in the short-term lodging. So some of the issues regarding revenue, the revenue policy decisions. When we have revenue diversion, if we revert divert some of the revenue to special revolving funds, such as we did with the waterway user fee revolving fund, the receipts went into that. So now we're using that, the Wolf Revolving Fund, for certain items related to waterfront infrastructure as approved under the Wolf Revolving Fund. The impact of the short-term rental tax, again, this is a large influx of money to the town of Chatham. So there's, I know there's been some discussion on what do we do with that extra money, so to speak? And then fiscal impact equity, the effect of any fees on the entire community, which we always look for when we're looking at fees moving forward. And we do review fees as the departments do report all their revenues when they present their budget. So I'm happy to take a pause now before we move on to expenditures.
Thank you, Alex. Let me go up, I have a comment, I see Shereen's hands up, and then we'll see if anyone else has anything. Just, I think you'll probably get to it anyway. When you talk about the tax, the, well, the tax rate, I, tax rate, 1.27% based on the valuation. As I remember reading it, the valuation is based on, let's say, more historical rather than what's going to be available at the time of the fiscal year. So we, we can expect that that could change, is that correct? And, and I don't know if it's, the valuation of the, the town is, I guess, what, what's the timing for the valuation of the town? And, and will we, could you see a change in after the fiscal year?
We usually have the values set sometime in late July, early August. We have to have the value set prior to setting the tax rate. The valuation of the town is directly related to the tax rate. So if the value goes up, the tax rate goes down. If the value of the town, the tax rate goes up. We still, we're only allowed to raise the amount up to the levy limit. So at this point, we are projecting about $3 million in excess levy capacity to keep that tax rate low. But again, if the values go down, the tax rate goes up. But it, the bottom line is, what, what's your bill? You know, what is your tax bill? And that's what we try to keep level each year.
Right, no, I, I understand that. But I'm, I'm just saying the valuation of the town, the, the assessments that are made, you know, the valuation of the town is based on what the assessed value is. Or is that correct? Or am I, am I backwards on that? Because all I'm saying is, you know, we have, the, you know, prices are going through the roof on, on a number of, you know, mortgages, the whole value, values of everyone's homes have increased considerably over a certain period of time, and they may or may not level off. And, and I'm, it seems to me the valuation is going to go up. But I'm using that as, as a basis, and is that wrong, I guess?
No, that's probably a very good assumption. The values, the valuation for the town next year will be based on sales made in calendar year 2021. So that was very strong. We probably could project up to a 20% increase in the valuation of the town based on some of the sales. Because again, the valuation, Massachusetts, it's full and fair cash value. So if, you know, you have a home and there's an identical home in your neighborhood that's sold for, you know, $3 million, you can, and yours is about the same, you can expect your value to be similar to that. So again, it's, it's based on the sales.
Yeah, okay, that, that's kind of what I was getting at, I may not have said it correctly. And then ARPA funding, we know that the, the county is involved with that and, and the town will be talking to the county about that and where our priorities lie. And I see Shereen's hands up, she may want to ask the same kind of question. But, you know, the, the, I guess, do we have a sense that the county is now between the two, between the Assembly and the, the Board, that they're, they're sort of walking in the same direction?
We have a conference call on Monday on that. So again, we will keep the board updated.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. Let me go to Shereen, she's, she had her hand up, and then Dean.
You did share the comment that I was going to make about the county money, the ARPA money and what we're looking at and the timeline of that. I, I, I have some concerns on, on timing with the county and hope that they get this all together and we don't lose out on opportunity. You know, because $41 million for the, for the county is pretty significant. And it looks like, you know, we're able to cash in on some of the, you know, other opportunities and funds, you know, like the Cape and Islands. Water Protection Fund seems to have helped us out quite a bit. On the ARPA that we've already received, Alex, it's been like half of, of, of the direct municipality ARPA money is somewhere around half already that we received?
Yes, that's coming in two trenches, we've seen, received the first one.
Okay, is that, is that used to do any reimbursement of cost-related? Or was that the rescue money that did the cost-related, COVID cost-related?
That has not been used to, for anything yet. So we're looking what to do because again, the, the rules on that are pretty strict.
Okay, all right, that's all, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have 626,000 in ARPA funds. And as, as Alex had just said, the, the guidelines for expenditure and use of the ARPA funds just got released last week. So we are going to meet with the county, they do have $41 million. And hoping that the priorities match our priorities as well. So we'll report back after that meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Dean, then Cory and Jeff.
Thank you, Peter. Just a comment on the local receipts at 85% that Alex mentioned. And I understand that, that we're going to monitor that going forward, particularly as it might relate to changes in the COVID situation, which we hope will improve and not get worse. But I, I would also, I certainly encourage that monitoring because the state of the economy is being challenged by high inflation. And, you know, the stock market took a dive today. So I think our monitoring should not be exclusive to COVID, but should look out for the entire economic scene going forward. We might have to make an adjustment downward from 85%. And I just wanted to confirm, the, the, the local receipts includes the short-term rental tax, right? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Alex, thank you.
Thank you, Dean, Cory?
Thank you, Peter. I don't have any particular questions about the presentation to date. I find this material and data very educational, and I, and I appreciate it. My question actually, and I'm just for my own curiosity, because I, I watched this via a iPad. And I'm just wondering if any of my colleagues are having trouble seeing some of these slides? Because some of them are coming up very dark. And I don't know if it's just something that I'm experiencing or if any maybe the viewers out there may be experiencing, or any of you folks are experiencing. But some of the slides are coming up very dark, and I just wanted to see how it's translated to everyone else.
Yeah, I'm on a, I'm on my iMac, and it's okay. But I'm going to put my iPad on and, and check it, because I have it here.
The one, the screen that's up on, the screen that's up right now is, 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 well, I'm looking at it as revenue policy discussed decisions. And it's a black background with a purplish blueprinting. And it's, I can read it, but it's not crisp. And I'm just wondering if anyone else watching this is experiencing, or it could just be me frankly, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm on my, Florence, I'm on my iPad, iMac, and it's perfect.
Yeah, I'm on a laptop, I'm on a laptop, and it's fine, it's an Apple.
Cory, I can email you the presentation, we, we're not quite halfway through it. So if that works for you.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm picking it up, but it's, it's some of the, some of the screens, some of the boxes are coming up very not clear. Some of the numbers in some of the previous screens had white and black numbers that were kind of clear. But I, I'm just wondering, which, it could be just my iPad, so that's, it's lucky me, that's, thanks.
Okay, Cory, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Peter, and Alex and Jill, thank you, yeah, once again, for the printed materials that you sent out to us in advance. And the budget book itself, again, very clear and an excellent job, both in terms of the write-up and the narratives and, and the graphics and the detail that supports those narratives. Couple of comments on revenues. The assumption about the short-term rental tax or the occupancy tax, Alex, doesn't include, and, and are going to 6% on that, is still at 4%. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Yeah, and then on the use of free cash, I think it's important that, you know, we're out there saying, hey, we've got 8.2 million dollars of free cash, look at this, isn't this neat? But I think we need to really be careful and, and convey that free cash as we use a lot of that free cash in this budget. So I, I think it's important to emphasize where we use free cash in the budget and, and to what purposes. Because it really, you made a great point earlier when you said, hey, I'm sensitive to the, to the property tax rate. This is how I'm supporting your property taxes, I'm using an increased amount in local receipts and, and other available funds. I think it's very important that taxpayers know what we're using from what bucket. I think it's great, I think you're doing a great job, I like the assumptions. But I think it's just important to make sure that we all really know where that free cash is going in terms of supporting the budget as we go and what the net result is at the end of this budget process of what we have for free cash going forward. Wanted to emphasize the ARPA funds, great point. I wanted to emphasize the, the water, the water protection fund dollars that are flowing and we're using in this budget as well. So I think those are other areas of support that taxpayers need to know that we're, we got monies above and beyond, certainly above and beyond the property tax, never mind all the other sources that we have. And I'll have more comments when we get to expenditures. But, you know, I just, again, the narrative, you read through the narrative, it's just, it's very well done, very well done. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, and I would agree. I mean, I've seen, I've seen them many over the years, and this is outstanding, Jill?
Yes, so I just wanted to reiterate, so when we're presenting the operating budget, there is no use of free cash because it's not sustainable. But for the capital budget, as you observed, we have programmed 4.9 million. And so that is the capital budget, the capital articles and the one-time capital articles. I know there's a lot of capital in there. But we look to have no reoccurring projects or utilizing free cash. It's, it's for a one-time, one-off type of program. So, and Alex is, is monitoring everything. And, and the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about if we are going to increase the, the short-term rental another 2%. And that's something that won't necessarily close out to free cash. That could be somewhat designated, as you had started talking about that at our last discussion, our last select board meeting. So thank you, Jeff, it's really important to point out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let's keep on going, Alex.
Okay, that was a nice segue, Jill. Okay, so the assumptions for FY 2023, again, the increase in our local estimated receipts, returning to the policy of 85% for the prior year actual. And then again, this is what was just mentioned, you know, a decision to either keep the room occupancy tax at the 4% local share or increase it up to, you know, by one or 2%. You could increase it 2% to 6% of local share. And then if you do increase it, would you want to designate that extra revenue? Or that, you know, the, the 2% of that revenue for a specific purpose? I know this has been brought to the board's attention, and other towns have looked to do this. I would say that, you know, we could easily, you know, know what that additional 2% is, either on just the short-term rentals or on the traditional rentals or on both of them. And what would that be, and what that would mean? Again, that would be across the board for both short-term and traditional lodging. And it does require a town meeting vote, but does not require action by the legislature. It's, it's just a local vote. So that's something to think about. And then expenditures, we looked at priorities, additional services, our resiliency efforts. Our pre-existing debt is per the schedule, although we always look for refunding opportunities, which we will probably be going out for refunding sometime this spring. And then the educational assessments, the Montomoy Regional School District and the Montomoy Regional Agreement need to be looked at, as well as the tech school. And then is there additional support for the Chatham Elementary School? And that is part of the changes to the regional agreement that will be presented to the board on February 1st, along with a preview of the regional school, the Montomoy Regional School District budget. So the FY 2023 budget overview. So the operating, the town budget is being presented at $35,216,382. The school assessments, which are draft at this time because they have not voted them yet, $9.1 million, so those may change. The water budget funded through water rates, $3,857,002. And the capital budget, $2,361,100. That number is different from what was in the budget book because it had a, there was a calculation flaw or error in the calculation. So the detail is correct, but the bottom line showed a lesser amount. One or two cells were dropped from the formula. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that is the difference there. So it is 2.3 million at this time. And then just looking, breaking out the expenses. The largest expense is in education as planned right now, public works, public safety. It's 16% each, just a pie chart that Cory might not be able to see very well at all. So broke, breaking out the operating budget, the FY 2023 as presented. And this is important because here we list, and this is in your budget detail, just some of the percentage increases. And we try to highlight why these are going up so much in some detail later. So general government, looking at a 9% increase, public safety, 6.7%. Community development, just over 13% increase. Natural resources, 18.8% increase, public works, 10.9. Community social services, a 2.5% increase. Debt service is going up by 3.3%, employee benefits a 3%. And then insurances and reserve funds staying mostly level at just under 1%. And that makes up the 6.57% increase over the FY 2022 budget that's being recommended for FY 2023. And some of the factors for that. And some of the factors for that, that large increase of six point five, seven percent, we have contractual obligations and fixed costs, some of the budget drivers. Again, the continuation of looking at some of the capital items that have been moved into the operating budgets. Town facilities, maintenance and, maintenance and resiliency, the continued needs. Some of the state and federal mandates, such as OSHA. Our OPEB funding, which is a separate standalone article. Our debt schedule for pre-approved debt. Again, we mentioned the educational assessments. And then COVID additional and ongoing costs. Because some of the COVID costs we'll need to fund that weren't reimbursed, and some of the additional costs for ongoing items that will continue in FY twenty twenty-three. So moving on to some of the changes of note, again, looking to increase legal services by twenty-five thousand dollars based on our prior year actuals. And we'll go through some of the staffing later, but I've highlighted here, as it does have an impact on these, and our changes of note. So for information technology, increase of a hundred and forty thousand. That includes adding one full-time equivalent, media assistant, IT assistant, as well as increases in contractual services for technology, contracts and licenses. Elections is going up, do we, due to the state primary election and the state election, and includes funding for early voting. Parking clerk, we're looking to increase the parking ticket applications, whether there's a better way of doing business. Public Safety, the Fire Department, looking to add two and a half FTEs. So two firefighters and a half-time, part-time administrative assistant, as well as some increases for medical supplies and training. Community Development, looking for a new FTE, Housing and Sustainability Director. So that's a hundred and ten thousand in increases under that budget. Not just for that position, but for that is an increase for their entire budget. Project Administration and Facilities, transferring one full-time equivalent to be Principal Projects and Operations Administration Assistant, which would be shared with the Cemetery Division under DPW. And plus an increase for contracted cleaning services, as we look to reassign the custodial positions over to facilities and over to grounds, rather. And then Recreation Beaches, a small decrease due to retirement of Dan Tovin, who has been here for many years. So a small decrease in that budget. DPW Cemetery, again, a decrease in the budget, however, we are increasing the hours for the part-time cemetery administrator, as well as providing assistance through that Personal Projects and Operations Administrator to the cemetery. A decrease in the contracted services, that will be an offset in the Parks and Grounds, as we discussed, because Parks and Grounds will move the cemetery maintenance in-house. And again, we are keeping some of that money in contracted services, as we're not sure how long it will take to get the new cemetery maintenance in Parks and Grounds up and running. So we want to have a contingency there to cover the cemetery needs for the first few months of the fiscal year. Parks and Grounds, again, we've just discussed, increasing by almost a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars due to one new FTE and transferring of two from a different division in DPW into the Parks and Grounds. Sewer increases in contracted services, utilities and chemical costs as the sewer ramps up. So a hundred and sixty-four thousand, almost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase. DPW, the transfer station, most of that increase is contracted services for trucking to CMAS. And moving on to the Natural Resources Division, Department, rather, Health Division. We're looking to increase the part-time health inspector to full-time. So their total amount is increasing by sixty-four thousand, and we're also looking, that also includes purchase services increase. Natural Resources, Conservation Division, again, another full-time equivalent, an Assistant Conservation Wetlands Purbing Coordinator. And part of that will be offset by the Wetlands Protection Fund, so not a direct impact to the tax rate. But again, the whole amount increase is looking at a hundred and forty thousand, almost five hundred dollars. And then the Harbor Master, increase of a hun- almost a hundred and twenty thousand, forty-five thousand. That would be for contracted services for float installation and removal. Looking to increase the vehicle and equipment maintenance costs. And then across the board, we looked at the seasonal rates for all employees, so we can maintain can be competitive with our neighbors. So again, seasonal rates, we've increased seasonal rates across the board under all departments to maintain the ability to hire quality seasonal workers here in Chatham. The Community Services Council on Aging, a reclassification, reclassification of the Council on Aging Director to the Director of Community Services Senior Services, which does include the COA, moving away from that Council on Aging to a more I don't know, a more holistic, I guess, look at all the services that a Community Services Senior Services Director can provide. So just under fifty thousand. Employee benefits, we will not know the projected increase in health insurance until mid-February, so we've programmed in an increase of almost a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars under the benefits budget. And then the insurance budget going up slightly, just increases in flood insurance and property insurance. So I'm gonna take a break right here, if there's any questions on that.
Okay, I got it off. Dean has his hand up, and then I have a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. With respect to the, the the short term rental and the hotel motel tax possibly going up from four to six percent, I think we should if, if the board is interested in doing this, we've had a lot of conversation about it previously, put, put this on as an agenda item in the near future, so that if we're going to do anything, we can do it and present it to town meeting in May. I think that the discussion should include the numbers that Alex talked about, in terms of dollars and cents, as to how much it would produce at one percent, or one and a half percent, or two percent additional. We should also invite interested parties that would have a stake in this, such as the lodging community, the merchant community, the Chamber of Commerce. Make sure they're aware of that agenda item, so that we can hear from them, because they've expressed, some of them have expressed views on this in the past, and also the third component of consider whether to dedicate any of it, or all of it, to certain purposes. The other is a question, the other point I wanted to bring up is a question regarding the Fire Fire Department budget, and I think Chief De Priscali is on, and Jill might want to chime in on this, or Alex. It's, it's been somewhat a quiet issue the last couple of years, but prior to that, for several years, every time the, the Fire Department budget came in, there was a lot of discussion about overtime. And I, if, if two additional firefighters are being proposed, and I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to support that. I just wondered, is that gonna have any impact on, on the overtime budget that's, that's in the department? Whoever wants to answer that.
Yeah, Chief, you like the answer that good.
Yeah, you know, in, in theory, it would save overtime, I just, there's no way to guarantee that. That was a question that the Finance Committee had last year. When we added the two positions, we ended up losing two people, we ended up losing somebody July first, so we had to cover one shift twenty-four hours the whole summer. We had a suspension, we had to cover a month, twenty-four hours, the whole shift for that month in, in the summer. So it's really hard to, you know, I can't say we're gonna save, in theory, we should. But I don't know what's gonna happen with storms, I, I just can't give you that guarantee. And, and, you know, they're not, there's, there's no way for me to say for sure. Because I just don't know what's gonna happen, so I don't want to make that promise. I mean, it's, it's kind of a cost of doing business, even though we had the increase in overtime this year, we didn't, we weren't able to fill the two positions, so we had those salaries. So it's gonna offset this year. But again, go, we just don't know what's gonna happen. We had a lot of people out with COVID this year, some of that's covered by the different funding mechanisms from the state or the federal government, but not all of it. So it's, it's a, it's a hard one.
No, I appreciate it. It always came up, when I was on the Finance Committee, this, this always came up, when Mike Ambrisco was chief, and then when Peter was chief. And I wasn't aware that the Finance Committee brought it up again last year, but I appreciate the honest answer, obviously. It's a goal, but circumstances can get in the way, and I understand that, and I, I'm supportive of the, of the staffing request. So thank you for, for your comments, Chief. That's it.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. The agenda item, I under, I understand your request, it, I, it fits into, was something I was gonna say that has to do with our next agendas, our agendas over the next month and a half or so. Obviously, they're gonna be focused on this budget, since we have to get it to the Finance Committee, and there's a number of issues in here that, that deserve, you know, a, 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 a clear, you know, debate and discussion, not only among us, but with, with the public, so. As a, as a, as a policy, or I'll use, Corey's use a philosophy, over the next month and a half, we're gonna be focused on the budget, not that we won't do anything else, but that's where our focus is, at least in my opinion, where, where we should go. Jeff is up, and then Shereen.
Yeah, thank you, Peter, and thank you, Alex and Jill. I just, just a couple of comments, I, the I was struck, you, you didn't, we didn't speak at length about it, and I guess we're gonna talk to the, to the Regional School Committee on the second, but I was struck with a, with the nine point one is, is the potential assessment from a statutory perspective or calculation, but I saw another number, and there was like one, one million eighty thousand dollars north of that, I was struck by that. So Alex, if you have any insight now on, on what's going on there? I, I thought we were gonna have an increase of about six hundred K, not, not, not one point one. So what's going on? Does that include a new roof or something?
It includes, and this will be explained more, but there was a pre-K at the Chatham Elementary School, and I have the explanation that shifted more of the cost to Chatham. So it's looking at one million eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, one one.
Rather than the six hundred that you had seen previously.
Yeah, well, that's a big jump, and we gotta hear more about that one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm extremely supportive of the schools, and we'll go, you know, but, you know, we, what was six hundred is now one one, so we have to have a chat about that. And then just, the, we had a lot, we, going to this budget, we still have a lot of open positions, and I, I'm not opining on the request for new positions, I, I, you know, I think we should, I think the Finance Committee will certainly vet them, and I think we'll vet them as well, and I think there's a good rationale for, for all of them. But are there any open positions currently that we're thinking about not filling going forward? And that's kind of question number one, and the, the other question I have is, what cost of living increases or contractual increases are included in the salaries budget? I think it's very important to point out, you know, what the budget assumes, Alex, because I think there is.
Yeah.
So thank you, a couple of comments.
Yes. There is, we've included on the contractual increases for FY twenty twenty-three is a three percent increase for employees. And I do have a little bit on this further, as we look at just the salary increase. So I've separated, separated out the additional proposed requested positions, as well as what those increases are. And again, the seasonal rates also have increased.
Just a quick question, we have a slide on OPEB as well?
Briefly, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And then to answer your question about the vacant positions, the two custodial positions that are vacant, as well as a recreation supervisor, we're, we're transferring the, the custodial positions, they're still within DPW to go to Parks and Grounds to manage the in-house cemetery and, and off-season work as well. And that recreation supervisor position, where we've transitioned, or proposing a transition to be the Principal Projects and Operations Assistant, and also help with the special projects for the cemetery, which is more of the digitization and mapping. Not so much customer focus, but we'll have a cemetery administrator with us starting this week, so more just redirecting resources to, to help meet the needs.
Yeah, thank you, Jill. The plan on the cemetery is good, it's, it's good, it's great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen?
My question was, or comments were on the fourteen new positions, and, and did I count somewhere in the range of seventeen vacant positions, including retirees and, and stuff? Am I correct that there's that many vacant positions in the town, Jill?
I have to count, so fourteen were requested back in two thousand twenty-one, and they weren't funded. So right now, we're up to seven full-time equivalent, equivalent, that means a couple of positions are becoming full-time from part-time. And I have to go back, unless, Alex, you have the number of vacancies. Primarily in, I know DPW, there's a couple, in Transfer Station, Parks and Grounds, and the Gate Attendant, and then I, I know that we have, we will have the Director of Parks and Recreation, Retirement, the Retirement of the Assistant Town Clerk, as well as the COA Director, and we have another COA Programs and Communications Coordinator position that's vacant, and then I think the last one in, and I think we have one in, sorry, one in the Fire Department, but I can check, and then we have the Department Assistant here for HR and the Select Board, so that's open. So by the time this, this presentation's done, I'll, I'll count them up, just to, to be
My other question was, you know, obviously recruitment and, and, and the competitiveness of the Cape towns with each other is, is pretty high. And, and we have to, I guess we have to understand and balance out that in some way, and that's reflective in incentives in some way to get folks to come to Chatham to work.
Yes, so a couple of things. One is for retention, so one of the proposals is to move, we have about seven or eight employees that are on technically an old scale. We had two, two pay scales, compensation scales in the town, and this is not related to the Collin Center, but it's just the legacy plans. And so we're moving those employees over to the new scale, which ninety percent of our employees are, and that will give them some growth, so so those employees will now have step increases in addition to the cost of living that's built into the plan. For competitiveness, we've lost a couple of positions, because the range is low. And that's something that we're right now looking at and talking to the union about. But it's, in the report too, it's the Great Resignation, it's the Great Retirement, and I think we're seeing it Cape-wide. There's, there's quite a few open positions in leadership, leadership positions as well throughout the Cape, so. And it's, I, I think our, our grounds, maintenance and labor positions are the hardest ones for us to fill, and so we need to get pretty creative about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Jill, you mentioned the Assistant Town Clerk retirement, so is the plan to fill that position as is? Are you shuffling, reshuffling anything in, in that regard?
That would be filled as is, because that person will step in to be the acting town clerk if, for some reason, the town clerk is not able to fulfill their capacity. So it, it's a pretty, I just would say, technically skilled position, higher level administrative person. So yes, we are gonna fill that.
Yeah, I think it's obviously an important one to fill. Thank you for, for the explanation. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Dean. I just comment on what Jill said, there was a couple of articles, not only in our local papers, papers, but in, in in, generally in Massachusetts, on the difficulty of finding people to fill jobs, especially again, housing was, was one of the critical issues they had. And, and also, you know, if, if you can't, if you can't find them locally, you have to bring them in, and if you have to bring them in, that's gonna cost more. And why should they come, besides being a beautiful place to live, but they have to be able to afford to live here? Three percent cost of living. I understand where that comes from. Cost of living, though, we'll see how that all plays out over the next year, because as was noted previously, inflation is going up. When it moderates, or if it does, or how it does, is a, you know, that's a macro issue that, that I'm sure everybody's worried about, but, but it is an issue. So given that, Shereen, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
No, I, no, I forgot to take my hand.
No, I, no, I forgot to take my hand down, Pete.
Okay. All right. Okay, back to you, Alex.
Okay, thank you. So as we discussed and you've seen this slide, I think before, that the workload challenges and capacity remain. As noted on this, during our pre-COVID budget that was presented, the departments had requested 14 additional positions. And with the COVID pivot, zero of those positions were funded. But the demands have not subsided since that time. They still remain for FY 2023. So again, you know, increased demands, less transactional, they're more complex, reliance on technology, again, regulatory compliance, the board commission committee complexity and staff liaison requirements, project management challenges and training needs are all some of the items that contribute to some of these workload challenges. So getting into the staffing, and again, this is the proposed staffing that we've separated out. IT, so one full-time media assistant, IT, sort of a swing person who can float between those two functions, $46,020. Community development, the Housing Sustainability Director, impacted $92,686 to backfill the principal planner position. DPW, the Cemetery Division, increase hours for the Cemetery Administrator from 15 to 19, small increase of $4,000. Again, that's in addition to that one FTE moving over to be the swing and float between the Principal Projects and Cemetery to provide assistance there. The Fire Department, two firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, $122,420. And a halftime 1.5 FTE for administrative assistant, approximately $25,000. Natural Resources, one full-time FTE, Assistant Conservation Wetlands Permit Coordinator, $61,470 is estimated, but that would be offset by 50% coming from the Wetlands Protection Fund. Natural Resources Health Division, increasing the hours of the part-time health inspector to full-time, about $32,400. And then Parks and Grounds and Cemeteries, in addition to moving two full-time laborers over to that division, one FTE additionally for $51,205. So that's a total of about $435,321, which averages out to about $63,000 per employee. If you, if you take those additional employees and divide that amount by that average. Again, again, these are estimates. And we try to estimate where we think people will come in and fill those positions. It's not always at the beginning step depending on their qualifications. So those are the additional proposed staffing moving forward. And as we talked about, the operating budget salaries only. So again, this is salary, the salaries only segregated from the expenses. This includes contractual wages, which have the 3%, COLA for FY 2023, increase in steps, increase in longevity. So the total increase in the salary and also seasonal wages are included in this too, 11.27%. And that does include the new positions. So that's a total of $1,461,903 as are presented right now. And as the Town Manager mentioned, we're moving all employees to the new scale and that's looking at approximately just a $17,000 increase. And that's included in this as well. So if that's it on salaries, I don't know if you wanna talk about this. I'm going to move on to the educational assessments.
Let me check with the board. Did anyone have a question on either salaries or the number of new FTEs? Cory?
Just one question on the, the full-time health position. How strained was that department? Because I know COVID really must have put a twist in, in the workload, you know, with the restaurants and food industries and everything else under the sun. I mean, I've, I've had a, you know, food establishment for over 20 years in this town and I'm used to the, you know, the, the, the local inspections. But over the last two years, I've seen, you know, Barstool County coming in and doing some inspections on their own. And I am sure locally, we, we had to have been strained. So is that full-time, I, I guess, I guess giving, making that a full-time position, does that kind of give us enough, give us enough? Is what my question is. Because I, I would think that department must have been strained fully these last year plus.
Yeah, so that was the request that the department had put in. And as you know, GD Giorgio is our, our health agent. And one of the items they wanted to work on, I don't know if you recall, that we saw a home rental and I think it was advertised for like sleeping, I don't know, 12 or so, but it was on a septic system. So some of those types of, of issues and items that, you're right, COVID has been really challenging. But this person would have, again, a more forward-facing interaction with the businesses, residential complaints, if there, if there are any. And we'll also work, you know, towards succession planning too. So learning what a health agent does, staffing the Board of Health and so forth. But definitely, this is a high priority item for the Department of Natural Resources for which the, the health agent is in.
No, I, I can agree. But I mean, I mean, obviously, we're gonna talk about all the FTE positions and, and you know, the Fire Department has always been one of my, you know, favorite departments to support. I think they're well deserved. But I do think this position does have a lot of merit. And I, and people maybe not understand the full impact of, of what this could do for the workload and how it could benefit the community. So I just wanted to bring some attention for that. I do think this one really does have some, I mean, they all have merit. But in particular, I think this one really might be overlooked, but it does have a lot of positive impact that I, I would definitely see myself supporting. So thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, it's Florence Selden from the Finance Committee. May I ask a question?
Um, yes, well.
No, okay, I won't.
Florence.
I'll save it.
Okay, thank you. I, I was gonna make one comment about the, the Finance Committee is, as you note here, it says salary only. And obviously, we're gonna hear about, you know, we have to worry about retirement and OPEB and all and so forth after this. And I, I took, you, you take a look at each one of these positions and, and given what we've been seeing over the last couple of years, you go from, you know, we're going from COVID where we, we shut down basically, but we still had a, a staff that was working. And now we're, we're coming back and the increases look, you know, they look large, right? But I can make, I can make an arguments for each, each one of the positions you want. At the same time, I, I don't have as many, you shouldn't do this at all kind of discussion on each of these. So I think a, a healthy discussion on, on each of the FTE slots that you're looking for makes sense. And we'll, I don't, were you planning to come back with that separately? We talked about it once already. And it, you know, we, I guess we'll just bring it back as part of a one package that comes to the, to the board.
Yeah, so what traditionally has happened is that we ask certain departments to come in to make presentations to the Select Board. And I had identified the departments requesting staffing increases. And also, we're still working and we're almost completed with just draft job descriptions too. So we can pass those to the Select Board and the Finance Committee just to have a better idea of what the duties and functions of, of those additional positions would be.
Okay, thank you, Jill. All right, and I don't see any others. Okay, Alex, continue.
Okay, so moving on to the draft educational assessments, because again, the school committees have not voted on their budgets yet. So the Monomoy Regional School District at this time, based on the regional agreement as it stands, is $8,673,183 to Chatham. With the alternative assessment, what is being called the alternative assessment, possible increase of $1,080,000 to Chatham. And that would be if we were to sort of take over our own element, you know, pay for our own elementary school. So each town would do that. So again, these are preliminary numbers because I, we don't know the health insurance increases yet. And also, they have not been voted. So we will present that more as we go. But as I mentioned before, Monomoy will be before you on February 1st. So they will explain this in great detail at that time. And then the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, at this time, looking at $427,266. That includes the debt service. There is a decrease of three Chatham students for FY 2023. So again, a draft number and we will wait till the tech votes, the Regional School Committee votes that budget and that will likely change as well. So again, as I just mentioned, Monomoy Regional School District, presenting to the Chatham Select Board, they'll be presenting both the proposed changes to the regional agreement as well as their proposed budget, which does include a 3.8% increase in the overall budget. However, that does not mean that Chatham's assessment will increase by that much. But they will present both the current methodology as well as the alternative methodology that is being proposed in the regional agreement. So and their final vote will be on March 10th. That's when the School Committee will be voting their budget. Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, they're having an overall budget increase of just under 2%. As I mentioned, a decrease of three Chatham students to 12. And again, they're awaiting the vote on the health insurance to see what those, that number will come in, as well as the Chapter 70 figures, which might adjust this budget. So moving away from the educational, again, the Water Department budget, which is presented as a separate article for FY 2023, total of $3,857,200. That's a 7.7% increase to the current budget for FY 2022. Salaries, $245,000. Expenses, $2.1 million. There's always overhead, which goes to the general fund of just under $308,000. And debt service of 1.1 million, based on the pre-approved debt, makes up the $3.8 million for the Water Department budget. Some of the increases are due to the Indian Hill Well coming online. So the expenditures for testing, for chemicals, additional electricity, et cetera, have all increased that budget. That's the reason why you see that large increase for FY 2023. And then the FY 2023 capital plan, over, just over 14 million was requested for FY 2023. And right now, we're recommending $2,361,100 recommended to Town Meeting. Again, funded through available funds, no impact on the tax rate, the large portion funded by free cash, the Waterways Improvement Fund and the Cemetery Sale Lots, as well as the PEG access funds. In the capital budget, we include all items regardless, you know, $5,000 to up to 7.3 for the overall financial picture, moving out to FY 2027. And as presented, the capital budget for FY 2023 is 6.28% of the operating budget, but does not include those items that we've segregated out as they're larger items that we feel that need to be highlighted as separate standalone articles and not included in the capital. So moving to the capital budget for FY 2023, you can see the department requests and what is being proposed, the $2,361,100. So again, funding source, 2.2 million coming from free cash. Waterways Improvement Fund is slightly lower this year than it has been in previous years because there's a large request for a surf capable boat being segregated out as a separate article, which probably will be funded through Waterways Improvement Funds, at least partially. Sale to, sale of cemetery lots and PEG access funds are your funding sources. Again, as we look at the capital, we use the project review criteria as established by the Collins Center. And these are those items, you know, the preserve or enhance town assets, increase efficiency and effectiveness, fiscal sustainability, the impact and savings on the operating budget, utilization by the public, and then what we call the Chatham factor, the influence on local policy areas, aesthetics, historic preservation, cultural and recreational opportunities, economic growth, environmental sustainability, and then public health and safety. And we look at all the items and those are scored in regards to these criteria. And as I mentioned, we have some other items that are pending review, the community preservation projects. We have over $2.9 million in requests, as we just received all the requests recently. So a lot of them came in at the very end. Town projects, dredging, training field, Old Comers Road intersection, which you had seen last week, continuation of the childcare voucher program, continuing to fund OPEB through the use of overlay surplus. Coastal resiliency, we have an opportunity for grant money, but we have to have a local match of approximately $850,000. And then housing, the board is very, made housing a priority. And we have the opportunity to transfer funds into an affordable and/or attainable housing, should the board wish to move in that direction. And we've built a placeholder into that, into the town projects. As select person Dykman's mentioned, OPEB funding. So here is our trust fund balance as reported by Bartholomew, so June 30th, $3.5 million in the account. Happy to report the reallocation of the 1.5% Land Bank Surtax back in FY 2021 has brought in revenue in 2021 of $546,000. And year-to-date, which is half a year so far for FY 2022, $286,000. So a nice dedicated source for funding our OPEB liability. As I just mentioned, we'll have a placeholder of $150,000 for funding the OPEB trust again. And interesting to note that our actuarial determined annual contribution has decreased as we increase our funding. So just under $1.4 million to fund, that is required to fund every year. So FY 2023, as we look at our FY 2023 budget, we look beyond that as well as we look at the priorities and the policy issues and directives in regards to these items that you see listed before you. So social infrastructure, economic and community sustainability, our OPEB liability, the community initiatives, the housing initiatives, coastal resiliency, which we just mentioned, climate change, continuation of any COVID funding items, our drinking water supply, which Special Town Meeting has funded and will continue to look at that in the future. And then continuation of the wastewater. And with that, that is the end of the presentation. As we look to the FY 2023 budget calendar, tonight kicks off the official budget presentation. The Finance Committee recommendations to the Select Board in February. The Select Board approved budgets back to the Finance Committee by March 1st. The Finance Committee recommendations back to the town by March 21st in order to get into the warrant. And the Annual Town Meeting more closes on March 24th. And then Annual Town Meeting is May 14th, a Saturday Town Meeting. And just would like to point out that your goals and objectives, we look at the budget in regards to those goals and objectives and those can be found on this link you see below. And that is what I have right now, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. Dean has his hand up.
Yeah, Peter, thank you, Peter. I accidentally disconnected when Alex was giving the Monomoy slide, Monomoy Regional Schools District slide. Was, did we get any further explanation as to the million dollars versus the 600,000? That, for the alternative assessment that Jeff asked about earlier?
Just briefly, but not really. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I expect that it says, it's, okay, the swing from Harwich to Chatham under the revisions to the agreement has gotten bigger due to the change in enrollment figures and increase in the budget. However, I think you will hear more on that on February 1st. However, I think you will hear more on that on February 1st because that will be explained in detail with the change, as we were expecting the six hundred thousand rather than just over a million.
Yeah, and I think one of the changes too is offering the pre-K preschool program in Chatham, where currently it's in Harwich only. So that, I think, is a good chunk of the increase.
Okay. The other question I had, and Alex, you alluded to a, the Harbor Master's Office, I guess it's the Harbor Minister, would acquire a surf capable boat? That's going to be the article?
That's correct. I think that's due to the policy decision. I think the Board would like to discuss that. And as Select Person Davis mentioned earlier in her opening comments regarding the Harbor Master's response at Scattery, I think that that's one reason why we brought it out. It was a placeholder of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's quite a large amount, which was also would merit some discussion.
Yeah, I look forward to that discussion. I assumed it was designed to deal with what they, the fallout from the Coast Guard's determination in removing two boats. And we can talk about that when the article comes before us and the staffing of it. But it sounds intriguing to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And once again, thank you, Alex. Excellent presentation. And Jill, the, you know, I would look forward, I wouldn't mind getting a cut it there alternative assessment before we meet on the first. I'd like to know just what's in it and what the cost of the preschool would be or not be. I just think it's important that, you know, I don't like to think that something's six hundred K and suddenly it's one-one. I just, I don't, it doesn't sit well. I'm extremely supportive of the schools, and I'm extremely supportive of having our own elementary school self-funded if the town does so support. But it just doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy to think I'm looking at six hundred and suddenly it's one-one. And if it's for a preschool and it costs that much, well, then let's have that debate and let's get it out there. But I'm very interested in that, in that discussion. The, I do think we ought to have, you know, an agenda item or a session or two, if you will, on the increase in FTEs. Just go through every one of them so we're real clear on what we're doing. I think there's been some real creative work here on, on having support between departments and sharing us some resources. And we were lucky to hire somebody recently into the administrative position in the cemetery. So that's, that's very helpful. And I think, just a wrap-up comment for me, is as much as, you know, this is a reflection of our priorities, I think it does reflect our priorities even in the increase in FTEs. And I think as we go forward, I'm really looking forward to the debate on, on, on those increases and what else we've done here in this budget. It looks like large increases, but when you think about, we had a request of 14 FTEs pre-COVID and everything was frozen. We've been frozen for a year and a half, it seems, or even two years. So, so I think we have to, we have to look at this budget in that context that, in fact, hey, we've done very little hiring. In fact, we've been suffering with open positions. That's why I asked about the open position question before. Perhaps those are still open, perhaps they aren't, but I think we need to be real clear on that as well. I also would really, you guys do such a great job on, and your staff, on generating grant dollars for Chatham. I think it's really important to lay right out there where, how many grant dollars we get and where the support is departmentally, because you do a remarkable job. And so I think it's important to get that, that accounting out there as well. Appreciate your effort. Thank you very much. These are always very interesting and really enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Shereen's hands up, and then I have some closing comments too, unless somebody else does. Go ahead, Shereen.
Yeah, just briefly, the closing comments are basically that, you know, the last three years of all this uncertainty and then building towards where we are now, I think speaks volumes to how everything has been managed for the town. And this has been a really interesting read this year. There was a lot in here that it's more and more every year is more comprehensive for me. And it also generates a lot more questions too. So I really enjoyed going through this and look forward to the next couple of meetings so that we can discuss a little more. So thank you, Alex and Jill, for the presentation, the staff that worked really hard on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Shereen. Yeah, I haven't seen anybody else's hand up. I just want to kind of reinforce what you just said. What we, what we, what we, we've seen is a lot of work done by, by the staff. I, I agree that this budget book and in the time that, you know, I've been here for, for what, four years or so, has, has gotten much, much better, even when it was good to begin with. Especially, I know the Finance Committee always wanted organization choice, and I was with them on that. You know, but, but the explanations are well done. I want to thank the staff that stayed with us all tonight, that were here, available to make questions. And I know a number of them have, you know, they're on all the time. We look at our Fire Department and our, and our, and our Police. And I'll even give Community Development, since I worked with them, I used to work with them a lot, like most of you, but you don't know how much work is being done behind the scenes. In any case, this is a, it's a, it's a changed budget. We're in a different time. And it's, it also reflects, I agree, our priorities and how we set our priorities. The final decision of what's important comes down to what we'll fund. And that's, that's the basis of our priorities. And I just, I appreciate the, the work that's done, and we are a well-managed town. I mean, I, it's not patting ourselves on the back, it's, it's a fact. We are financially well-managed. And we take that, and I think, for granted. If you've watched what's happened in a number of towns over the last few years on the Cape, they've had some really interesting problems, and we haven't had to put up with that. And we've been able to respond to, to critical issues. And do we always think that everything is perfect? Not at all. Not at all. We all have our, our issues with, with something that isn't done or hasn't been done or whatever. But in, in general, I think this is, this is just a super job. And I, and I, I look forward to the debate on the FTE also. I mean, I think it has to come out. It has to be discussed. It's been held back for three years, really. And not only because of COVID, but just before COVID. So having, having said a lot, do I have anyone else that'd like to make a comment? Or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? Okay. Let's, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good night, Chatham, and thank you very much, Town Manager and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks.